We'll have a moment of silent meditation, then a pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It is 10:01. It is March 16, 2022. And I call the meeting to order, and all three county commissioners are here, but before we get to consent and approval, we have, we'd like to take an action.
Yeah, I'd like to address a policy or a directive that the county has been working on regarding our masking requirement. And I'd like to just go ahead and read the directive that the county has, the county commission, and in conjunction with all the county offices and the Justice Center have, have developed. Based on the decrease in positive case numbers and guidance by our state and local health officials, indoor masking is no longer considered a necessary protocol to manage the spread of the COVID-19 variants for the foreseeable future. Under the direction of the Montague County Commission, effective Wednesday, March 16, 2022, the use of masks when entering or while in the main common areas of county facilities will be optional for members of the public. Disposable masks will remain available for the general public, who still prefer to wear a mask for health reasons. The MCC will defer to each elected official department head as to the masking requirements for the members of the public while conducting business within their respective offices. Those employed by the county or have, have offices within county facilities should seek guidance from their immediate supervisor as to masking requirements. Montague County Commission will continue to monitor case activity and health officials' guidance as we continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic. This guidance is subject to change if there's an increase in cases. It is linked to the reduced and/or lifted precaution. Then the precaution can be added back to the protocol to minimize any future increases in spread. It is expected that everyone should continue to be diligent and monitoring for symptoms of COVID-19, and if experiencing signs of illness, should follow testing protocols and remain at home. If testing positive regardless of vaccination status, employees are required to isolate for at least five days and follow the protocols per the previously adopted MCC policy.
So at this time, if, all three of which we are all in agreement, you have the option of whether you want to wear your mask or not. I'm going to take mine off, at least for right now. And I also want to thank the public that has been very diligent in working with us and every, and all the community members to get to this point. I know it's been two years. I can't believe it. But I do appreciate everyone's help and support and look forward, hopefully, moving forward, that we won't have to go back to wearing masks.
And I also want to note that we continue to monitor the cases daily. The last two weeks, we haven't had updates on a regular basis because of tie-ups with the state. But we have been, our, our goal was to at least get the county under 25 cases per 100,000 for at least some discernible period of time. And it's, it's been under that for 25 weeks. So I do think that now that, this is a good time to go ahead and relax the policy.
Thank you very much. Now move on to consent and approval. Good morning.
Morning. We have 22 exonerations for $7,047.80, minutes for March 9, 2022. Vouchers: General County Fund, $150,782.24. 911, $13,001.69.13. Chestnut Ridge Park, $240.76. Mason Dixon Park, $375. Mon County Center, $3,085.43. Transportation Levy, $330,956.66. Library Levy, $81,233.60. Reallocated Coal, $654.99. Assessors' Valuation, $3,003.84.10. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $33,695.41. Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County, $35,145. 911, $8,067.91. Assessors' Valuation, $189. For a voucher total of $660,835.68. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for March 16, 2022. And file status reports for the second, third, and fourth quarters of 2021 for Matthew Gutter.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Proper move in second in the discussion.
Yep.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Now we have several fiduciary orders.
Well, these are separate fiduciary items. You've already approved the orders.
Okay.
Petition to remove the executrix and appoint administrator CTA for the estate of Andrew Imeg. Ameggy? Ameggy?
I move that we approve the petition as presented.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Just from a discussion standpoint.
Why we had to do, yes.
We ruled on this about two months ago. We gave the individuals were contesting the will.
That's the other estate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to.
This is the one where the individual, there's been no action. It's been on administrative closed list.
Yes.
And it, now somebody has come forward that wants to, to, to take on those responsibilities. So our, our action here would be to approve the petition as presented.
Okay. Since we're proper moving second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. The other one is the objection to the settlement in the estate of Billy Wayne Jones.
So I move to approve the order as presented.
Proper move in second. Did you want to explain what this one was?
Yeah, discussion standpoint, we had, this is the one that we ruled on about 60 days ago, where we gave the petitioners were contesting the will. This is not the venue to contest the will. So we gave them 60 days to provide notice that they were contesting the will with the circuit court. They have provided that notice, so now we can go ahead and approve the order to accept their, their objection to the settlement.
Okay, proper moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Is there anything else?
No.
Thank goodness. Introduction of new employees, personnel changes? Good. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Please keep it three to four minutes and address, we will not respond to them, but please address the county commission at this time. Would you just state your name and address? Good morning.
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 My name is Dwayne Nichols. I came to work in town in 1955. When I see Montague County, formed in 1776, there's no place on earth I'd rather be. I'm a member of the Montague Historical Society. I'm a director of the, of that group, and I'm here to speak as a director, but not for the organization. As we speak here now, there's an evidentiary hearing taking place at the Public Service Commission in Charleston, dealing with the proposal to put solar panels in the Mon Power property at Fort Martin. We already know about Longview 3, I call it, which is solar panels to be placed across the road from the church by Longview people. I have written a letter and submitted to the evidentiary hearing, and I'm going to give you a copy of that this morning. In the application for those panels is this map. And if my color printer were better, you'd have a copy of it already. But as you can see, the yellow highlighted portion, that's the land that's proposed for solar panels. Now down here's the river, and you come up this long one-mile hill. 300 trucks per day of coal already on that road. It comes up to that point right there. It's called Cease Lane. That goes over to the coal dump and prep plant for the Longview Power Plant, which is right there. You can see it. Crafts Run Road is over there, but we've got to get a connection. There's no public connection from Cease Lane over to Crafts Run Road. It's a, it's a missing link. Okay. Come on up here, and we come to the Fort Martin Methodist Church. And this is proposing putting panels on three sides of the church. And I'm saying that's inappropriate, that setback needs to be better than that. Okay? Then the caretaker lives right there, an acre and a quarter. And again, contained within three sides by panels. It's just, it, it shouldn't be, and that may be a misrepresentation. This map may not be accurate for what their others are intended, but that's what we have to go on right now. Just for your information, the original Fort Martin was right over here where the ash dump is. The church is there now, and Colonel Martin is buried right there in that. Okay, right here's the Garlow Cemetery. You can see that little green dot right there. John Garlow, I talked to him just a couple of days ago. He's concerned too. So I'm speaking for John Garlow as well as myself here today.
Okay.
Okay. Over here on Cease Lane is something called Fort Harrison. Because Colonel Martin's daughter, Anne, married Richard Harrison, and they had another fort. So this is an historic area, and it is deserving of attention. And I hope to bring that to you, because we could have a roadside stop right here beside the church. We could have a baseball field or a hiking trail over here, as suggested by Longview, but not committed to it. The Public Service Commission has suggested it, but has not committed to it. Over here, we have the preservation suggested for Fort Harrison. I believe my time's up. Is that right?
Well, if you want to finish up, go ahead, right ahead.
All I want to do is pass out, may I pass out these, these things here? And then I wanted to thank you for your attention here today, because you can help by taking an interest in historic preservation.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
There you go. Thank you, Senator.
Okay. Good morning. If you could state your name and your address, please.
My name is Cara Brown. I live at 4210 Persimmon Woods Drive.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the commission, Commissioner Bloom, Commissioner Secora, Commissioner Arnett, Commissioner Hawkins, former commissioner, I guess I should say Hawkins. But three years ago, we were not in the place we are today with Monty EMS. And we are extremely blessed to be where we are through the hard work of you all, as well as Mon Health and David Goldberg and WVU Medicine. We're in an amazing place with Forest leading us. And I am so thankful, as a citizen of the county, to have EMS service that is far surpassed my expectations. When we started on this project, I didn't think we could ever get where we are today. And I tell them often that a lot of times I'll drive past an accident or I'll, I'll see something, and Monty EMS is first on scene. And I'm so thankful that we, as the citizens, are now able to have this kind of service, because time is of the essence if you're dealing with something like my son, who has an anaphylactic peanut allergy, or other things like a heart attack, a hemorrhage, a stroke. So I just wanted you all to know how thankful I am for the work that you all did. It was not easy, and it was time-consuming, but it has benefited the citizens of this county greatly. And I don't know if they're all aware of it. If they've talked to me, they are. But if they haven't, they might not be aware of how, how, what an amazing job you all did in forming Monty EMS. So thank you, because it matters and it saves people's lives. So I appreciate it and just wanted to tell you thank you.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate that. And you were there at the beginning. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close comments from the public. Okay. At this time, we will have a second reading and public hearing regarding the Mon County Planning Commission's Resolution 2-22 Protect Amendment 002-2021 to the West Run Zoning Ordinance by one. Alter the conditional uses Section 1100.04 and bulk requirements, Section 1100.05 of the R1 District in relation to duplexes. Alter the conditional uses Section 1150.04 and bulk requirements Section 1150.5 of the R2 District in relation to duplexes. Three, we're going to alter the conditional uses Section 1200.04 and bulk requirements Section 1200.05 of the R3 District in relation to duplexes and townhomes. And finally, alter the conditional uses Section 1250.04 and bulk requirements Sections 1250.05 of the R4 District in relation to duplexes and townhouses. And how we run a public hearing is we will now have the individual speak from the Planning Commission, Andrew, who will explain what's going on, then anyone who is for it, then anyone who is against it, and then if there's, needs to be rebuttal. So Andrew, go right ahead.
Yes. Thank you very much. Andrew Gaspar, Director of Planning for Montague County. Thank you very much for this opportunity. This is a text amendment trying to correct a small oversight. Unfortunately, it's one of those things that impacted each district because of the small oversight. With duplexes and townhomes, there's a slightly different layout of those on a site. In particular, how it fronts, like the duplex would be right on a property line. This worked fine in every context, except when the lots were being carved up and for individualized ownership. That was not seen in the original work. It was an oversight. So in order to get the setbacks and the appropriate layout on the property that is customary with duplexes and townhouses, we had to make this change. And it addresses things that happened long before the zoning ordinance went in. We posted to the Planning Commission. They were completely in support, and there were no objections whatsoever. But I'd be happy to answer any specific questions on this matter.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this text changes? Okay, if I see none.
Mr. President, can I ask, does the staff have anything that they've received communication that you'd want to report on this?
I have nothing.
Okay. So we've received nothing either, and you haven't received, okay, fantastic. So then what I will do is I will close the public hearing, and we'll move further on. Then during new business, we will address this issue. Okay, at this time, we have a very important presentation from Mon EMS, and I hope that this is going to be taped, and I do hope that the public watches this very carefully. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. May it please the commission. Once again, Forrest Wine with Mon EMS. I'm the executive director for Mon EMS. I appreciate Mrs. Brown's comments on the work that we've done and your all's hard work along with Mon Health and WVU Medicine. I'm here to give a quick update and tell you what's, what's happening with Mon EMS in the next few years and where, where we've, where we've come. So to start off with, just to get a quick review of where we at. In late 2018, Mon Health and WVU Medicine announced that they would start to talks, start in talks to actually merge Mon EMS. They, it took, obviously, it takes a while to get some of those details worked out. That was finalized in May of 19, and the organization itself, the new Mon EMS began to exist in July 1 of 2019. Yours truly arrived here in October 1. And during that time, we've been merging, setting the foundational aspects of Mon EMS. It took almost eight months to get the staff all under the organization, because there's a whole lot of detail, as anyone that's run a business knows, it takes a while to, to get those folks onboarded and up to speed and everybody singing from the same sheet of music. Since then, we've added some stations, temporary stations, ones that meet the need to Ms. Brown's point, keeping the response times as low as possible and getting care out to the community. We had folks sitting on street corners and other things. We now, you know, buildings where they had access to, you know, a table to do their charting or a place to eat lunch or use the restroom, that type of thing. So those folks were all placed now out in the county, all in temporary structures, but all, you know, out of the weather and, and facilities. And we have been constantly working to upgrade the, the infrastructure that was given to Mon EMS, and that's ongoing over the last few years. Next slide, please. So just a quick review of the map. We are located everywhere from Blacksville to Cheet Lake, Clinton District, various places around town. Our education and administration center is over in the Westover area. And we, and obviously, this is, this is just static station locations. We obviously have more trucks on than this. You can go to the next slide. One thing that was really smart, and kudos to Montague, to the commission and commission, the former, previous commissioner Hawkins, as Ms. Brown said, you all were really, really smart in not trying to recreate the wheel. You leveraged the power of two of the most powerful health systems in West Virginia to help create and build this EMS system. That's something not a lot of counties would have done, or a lot of governmental agencies around the U.S. So this is, this is a fantastic thing. And you've got representative from both health systems. You've got community representation, and you have Mr. Smith from the, from the county as well. So fantastic makeup of building a true inclusive agency that really brings all the key players into place. A couple of quick data review here for you. The, the 911 calls, so when I speak to you all, because 911 business is the, the 911 side of things is truly what you're interested in. The transport side of business, the non-emergency business basically takes care of itself. The 911 business is the thing that is really the, the interest of the county and the citizens. The number of calls has increased over 20% in the last year, which is somewhat surprising, but that is a really big clip over the last year. Next slide. The, our goal is to try, in an urban area, which is mainly downtown, Sabreton, Evansdale, is to try to get an AMOS to you in less than nine minutes. That's a relatively a national benchmark. We do have, there's a couple of lines here that are a little bit higher. And we live in a weird area, because some of our stations are located on a line between an urban and a rural area. So like, for example, our Gateway Station, which is out near the exit 155, they cover the, the Star City and east side of town, but they also cover all the way to Core. So those, those response times might seem a little bit high, but that is, there's some, there's some magic hidden in the data of why that's like that. As you all can see, the trend near the end of last year was upwards, and that's awful, and I'm not, not a fan of that. But I can tell you that with Omicron variant, some of the staffing issues I'm getting ready to talk to you about, like that was, that's just the way it is. All of the healthcare systems, and you can ask Mr. Goldberg, Mr. Wright, all of the healthcare systems were absolutely stretched thin. EMS was stretched thin. Everybody was, you know, everyone was busting at the seams, and we were doing absolutely the best we could. But definitely was trending upwards. That, in addition to staffing shortages, really impacted just overall with healthcare in the, not only in Montague County, but around. This is just the rural one. The, the Blacksville times are higher than I would like. But once again, that is a rural setting and anything in that area, you're going to have a longer response time, just because it is such a large square mileage, anything west of the Core area. All the rest of the rural areas are under that 15-minute benchmark, which I'm excited about. Next slide. The, this is just a quick data on the 911 calls by zone. So you can see, over the course of the year, average calls by month per zone. On that, and sorry, the first one was urban, and the next one's rural. You guys can dig into that. I don't need to explain too much. This one is a really powerful slide. This is the ones, the average calls per day by zone. And one of the reasons I want to bring this to your attention is, is I think it's a really impactful slide, where if you, if you see the data on there, the green and the blue lines near the top, for someone that's into data and analytics, it takes about, assuming all other things are normal, so that there's proper insurance and we get proper reimbursement and all that type of thing. And we actually transport those patients, because remember, we don't get reimbursed for patients we don't transport. That it takes about 6.2 calls to make a truck viable, to make an ambulance viable for, 6.2 calls per day, excuse me. If you look at this slide, if I was a business person and I was going to open up an EMS agency in, in Montague County, I'd put an ambulance downtown and I'd put an ambulance in Evansdale. All the rest of it, and as you can see, like the Blacksville area, there's .8 calls per day out there in a 24-hour period. So it's a, it's a really hard, you're, you're really paying for that readiness and leaving those ambulances available, because we, as citizens and myself included, we want that ambulance nine, 10 minutes away. When something happens, we want that response and that readiness and those folks there. I talked to you a little bit about our staffing. In the late 2020, excuse me, 21, our staff, just like every industry was having, I'm sure you all, and I know the sheriff, I've heard some of his woes as well, that folks are leaving healthcare for a variety of reasons. And, and a lot of it, just the normal staffing issues that a lot of folks are having, where the wages at normal industries like a Lowe's or a Menards or restaurants or hotels or what have you. And all, that's all great. I think wage growth overall is wonderful. But that was, that was really putting a pressure on, on EMS. Our board passed in December a significant wage increase that allowed us to try to keep some of those staff. We've actually seen some of those staff actually come back now. It hasn't solved the problem, but I feel like we've definitely slowed down the bleeding, and we're starting to reverse it a little bit, so that's really good. But that's a, that's a huge hit to, obviously, our bottom line. So where are we at right now? The, there you go. I've already hit on the fact that you folks leverage the two biggest systems. And these systems, this readiness cost, those AMOSs that don't make sense as far as on the, on the actual revenue side, your health systems have funded that for a number of years. And no matter how efficient I can get an EMS system, which I think we've done a really, really good job at on the non-emergency side coupled with the emergency side, we've made a very, very efficient system. However, no matter how efficient I get that, there's always going to be a readiness cost. It's the reason that stores aren't open at 2 o'clock in the morning, because there's no customers. If we could, if we could shut down ambulances in the middle of the night, that'd be fantastic, but that's not what we need, because car wrecks and chest pains and accidents and other things happen at 2:00 in the morning. So there's always going to be that readiness cost. The, as you all know, in code, it does state that the county should, or the county needs to provide some sort of EMS service. However, it says that you don't necessarily have to fund that. It says, so it's, it's literally an unfunded mandate from the state, but it's, it is a, it is a thing that the county does need to provide. And you all have done a great job of building that agency. Switching back over to the, to the, to the billing side of things is the number of non-billable calls. So these are the calls that we, we respond to and don't transport someone. We get canceled. Other situations like that. The EMS system is broken. That's okay. But it's, it's broken because we're only paid, EMS is only reimbursed if we actually transport someone. So we're not here for all the other things that happen. This, our 911 calls increased, but the number of calls that are actually billable that we actually can, you know, paying an insurance agency for, has increased greatly over the last couple of years as well, which is really, really concerning. So I'll give you a quick 101 on EMS billing, because I think that sometimes folks are like, especially a business person, it's like, well, just raise your rates or, or figure out, you know, how else would you go solve this problem? That's a great idea. But as you see on this slide, let's pretend, and these are, this data is a few months old, but let's pretend that it costs $940 to, that's what we charge to take someone to the hospital, provide them basic emergency services to someone. If you have commercial insurance, which a lot of us do that have jobs or have, you know, healthcare through Blue Cross or Aetna or whoever, that, that our commercial insurance, we bill that, and they pay it. Your governmental payers, your Medicare and your Medicaids, part of the deal of playing in those systems are, we, we can charge them whatever we want. They have what's called a Medicaid allowable expense. They're going to give us X number of dollars, and in exchange for participating in that system, we, as EMS agencies, can't go after the patient for that additional amount, which is fine, because we're providing the healthcare. Now, that system works great until you look at those top numbers, or excuse me, the bottom numbers, where almost 75% of the people that Mon EMS takes care of fall into that Medicare-Medicaid realm. So the system itself is not set up correctly. That's not something we're going to fix at the county level. It's stuff that I'm working on at a federal level and a state level. That's just the, this is the situation. So I saw Delegate Statler here. He came to present with you all a few weeks ago. It is no secret that EMS in general is in crisis. We've had two EMS agencies in the last year shut down in Preston County. We've had one in the, at least one I know of in this other part of the state, another one that is teetering. I had, I've got word that two others in our general vicinity in the North Central West Virginia Agency, or North Central West Virginia region, are on the verge of teetering. So EMS is in crisis. It's, it's a, it's a tough industry. Healthcare is, is rough. EMS providers, it's, it's a, the days of being able to go and, and serve people and go home are decreasing, because now it's, you're constantly in a COVID bubble. You're dealing with massive amounts of people, lots of stress, a lot of mental health issues, addiction issues, homelessness, all that. We are the safety net for all of you. So it's been, so it's been very difficult. Apparently, I moved my hands too much when I talked.
Drop the mic, moment. It's supposed to be.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's not just a West Virginia problem. If you've looked at any of the national media outlets in the last couple of months, this is a nationwide issue. It's not, it's not Jermaine to Mon County or West Virginia. It is, is a national problem. EMS agencies from Wyoming to Florida are dealing with staffing issues, reimbursement issues, infrastructure issues, all that type of thing. So it's pretty, it's pretty rough. To inform the commission, we did some data research. To inform the commission, we did some data research on our side, and 60% of the counties in West Virginia fund EMS in some capacity, whether that's through a levy or through a budget line item. Of those, I like to try to compare apples to apples. So to me, it's, I like to look at per capita, because I think that helps us to equalize both the more rural counties and the more populous counties. And of the counties that fund EMS, they look at anywhere from 22 cents up to $221 per person, with a state average of about $48, and the statewide median a little over 30. So there is, there is a little bit of precedent to fund EMS in some capacity, especially for that readiness cost. And we're not alone. If you look around the nation for EMS agencies like Mont EMS that provide both an emergency and a non-emergency function, there are, there is methods for county support around the nation as well. And if you look at some of the data that's on your slide there, as far as the per capita cost, they're not far off from the West Virginia averages. So as far, the market drives stuff, we're not too far away of where that number should actually be. So right now, to remind you and the public, the current, it costs about 11.4, this is a little bit old data, because our new, the raises aren't in there, so it's about 12.3 million now. And right now, Mont Health and W Medicine, let me back up, of that, of the patient reimbursement that we get, about 6.8 million of that comes in through patient revenues and reimbursement. So we're, any possible monies that are out there as far as insurance reimbursements, Medicare, Medicaid, commercial insurers, contracts with W, like, any services that we provide, we generate about 6.8 million. It costs about 12.3 to run Mont EMS, and on this slide, I have 11.4, but it costs about 11.4 to do that. Right now, your two health systems, Mont Health and W Medicine, are making up that difference. I think it's a very altruistic thing for them to do, but it, that readiness cost, like I said, the moving the patients part actually can be revenue neutral. The readiness cost of leaving those ambulances available when you have business that can be handled elsewhere is where a lot of this cost driver comes from. So one question that comes up frequently is that, well, why, Forrest, why would we do a 911 service only and not just do a, well, we'll handle the 911, you handle the transports? That's great, but what ends up happening is, with the blended service, we get a lot of economies of scale. The county gets more ambulances available, we can use those ambulances in more ways, we can handle the non-emergency and the emergency business. Your loss per call is a lot greater, you have more ambulances available for the county, and the surge capacity for, as you all know, we staff 911 services based on historical data, but as you know, some days, let's pretend a day that it snows, everybody in Morgantown wrecks at the same time. Jimmy, call takers will verify that. Those are days where we can pull some folks from the transport side and move them to the 911 side. There are other days where 911 is not busy, we can adequately staff the county, and we can move some of those resources over to the transport side, try to move those patients. So it becomes a very, very efficient system. So I wanted to let the county know that we have decided, and come to you for, to let you know, that we do feel as though that it is appropriate for Mont EMS to get some sort of county support. We feel as though that probably a levy is probably the best way to do that. We're going to, we're working through the paperwork and the economics right now. We've developed a 10-year plan on the infrastructure and personnel needs and all the things that we need. We feel as though that this will help with the operational readiness for the county, help us build the infrastructure that we need, and to keep the EMS system that Ms. Brown so nicely said earlier, that we've got up and running, and we need to build and sustain and make sure it's ready to rock and roll. And we don't become one of these agencies that collapses, or becomes one of these counties or regions of West Virginia, or the nation, that loses their EMS service, because your police, your fire, and your EMS are your safety nets. So when all the other systems fail, you usually call one of us to come and deal with stuff, and then they usually end up at one of our two health systems, if it's a patient-related thing. So I do think that this will be a minimal impact to county residents. Like I said, we're working out the details, we're working out a 10-year plan. I think it'll be very reasonable. We're not trying to make money here, we're trying to literally break even, to provide services to the county, provide a fantastic resource and quality of care. And that's all I have.
You can catch your breath, catch your breath right now. Did somebody want to respond before we, or is there someone else you would like?
I would, I'd like to introduce really quickly, too, before I take questions. Dr. Mike Shukas joined Mont EMS. He was, it takes about four to six weeks to get things approved by the state, but Dr. Shukas is Mont EMS's new medical director. He joined us from Northern Virginia, went to school at UVA, we won't hold that against him, went to VCU for medical school, and then did his residency in Pittsburgh, followed by an EMS fellowship, which is a new fellowship that came out in the early 2010s. So he's a former EMS provider, but now EMS physician, and is already, I've actually had to pull the reins back on him a little bit, he's wanting to get started a little too quick, but Dr. Shukas is the new county medical director, I just want to introduce him to the county.
Welcome.
Welcome to the county.
Do a very quick, say hi.
Sure, go ahead.
Gentlemen, I already gave you the one-liner of who I am. Just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for having me here. I'm excited to work with Forrest. Mont EMS is a very high-functioning agency, and I've heard that there were issues in the past, but I've heard great things with how this has pushed forward in the last several years. And every interaction I've had in the hospital has been excellent with them. Like you said, I was previously an EMS provider, I look forward to helping to continue to train, educate, and push healthcare forward for our community, and for the, for Mont County as a whole. Having said that, I'll have Forrest help rein me in a little bit to keep things going, and I look forward to having a good working relationship with you guys to help make sure that we're keeping healthcare safe for our community.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you in the next several years.
Welcome to the county.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll take questions, or?
Who wants to go first?
Sure. Well, first of all, we won't, we won't comment on the levy, because you're going to bring us something that we're going, we ultimately, as a body, have to approve, we put on the ballot. But I do think that, you know, I want to acknowledge that the commission sees that we need to be a partner in this. You know, whenever we worked a couple of years ago for you guys to merge, you know, we're getting, the citizens were getting a deal of a lifetime. And I knew back then that it was, you know, is this sustainable? And what we want to do is, we want to grow what we've already done, and we acknowledge that we want to be a partner. So we are a partner, we're going to be a partner regardless of however this goes. So we're going to continue having that conversation to ensure that our citizens have access to the best possible EMS service as possible. And I do personally want to thank David Goldberg, who is the driving force in bringing this organization together. You have to remember, Mont General, Mont Cist Health Systems had the service. It took David's leadership to bring his organization to the center, and Albert Wright from W Hospitals to bring his organization to make this organization work. And it does work. It does, it works beyond our wildest imagination. And Kara, you don't need to thank us, we need to thank you. People need to understand that Kara was coming in in a public session telling us, hey, we have an issue. We listen, and public comment does have an impact. That goes for you, Mr. Nichols, I didn't want you to miss that. Public comment does, does work. So thank you, Kara, because Kara is a citizen who got involved, got educated on the subject, and educated herself, educated us, and at the end of the process, David and Albert had the foresight to put her on the board. So it works, works the way it should be working. So thank you, Forrest. You've exceeded my expectations for what a leader of this organization can be, and we need to, David, we call him Lockdown, right? We need to make sure we keep him, because he, every time.
He's LoJack, you don't have to worry.
Every time I've asked for something, he's, you know, I get all the detail, the facts, the issues all lined up, and we've been, we've been discussing a lot of issues over the last couple of months with service at different areas. When there's questions that are brought to us, we bring them, we bring them to Forrest, and Forrest acts on them. And again, this is a continuing opportunity to continue to perfect this organization, which I think is the best in the state. So thank you, Forrest.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Well, I have a couple. First, I do want to thank Ms. Brown. She made it very uncomfortable for me as I sat up here, but it was, but for good reason. It was for good reason, because she was very passionate, what she believed in. I thought we were providing a good service, did not realize that we could provide a better service. And Ms. Brown made it clear that she educated all of us and got everyone together. So I personally want to thank you, because when I saw you here again today, I thought, oh, no. I got a scare right away, because, but that is what makes Montague County great. People like you who see an area that needs to be looked into, and then the community resolves it. There are two things I'd like to say. One is, the two important issues that stand out to me is the one picture in the graph of understanding EMS billing. And I would hope that, I don't know if you're able to, but I think that is key, because everyone asks me, well, why don't you just charge more? Why don't we just go to the federal government? They don't realize that is all you're allowed to charge. So as a community, we have to come up and make up the difference. So I think that one is really important. And then the statement that bothers me the most, which is the most, the thing that I hear more than anything, as a county commissioner, no matter how efficient our EMS system gets, there's always a readiness cost. And people do not understand that we don't even think about EMS until it's needed, and then you want it immediately. And that's what we're talking about today. And I can't say enough about, you know, Dave Goldberg, who, when he came here, I'm like, Dave, there's no way you're going to get everybody working together. And again, you know, through his leadership, you know, and persistence, we got, there were a lot of things in the past, I can tell you, that didn't work well, but we put that aside, said, okay, we can keep complaining, or we can move forward, and that's what we want to do. And finally, I do want to say, and maybe Delegate Statler, if there's anything you want to say, you have been at the forefront down in Charleston. Is there anything on the horizon that maybe you see? And if you'd like to just, I'd like to hear that, because you were there, you're there fighting it. Do you see anything in the future? I mean, we have to deal with this now, but do you see anything?
I was afraid you was going to put me on the spot. I would say to you that we did focus a lot, especially, I'm chair of fire in EMS, and I have a very good vice chair in Clay Riley out of Harrison County, and we worked a lot on this. Unfortunately, this problem, as he stated, is a state, national, and local problem. And if you look across the state, there is no formula how it's handled, including volunteer services. He mentioned that Preston County lost two of the volunteer services. Unfortunately, what we don't know, citizens of Montague County, I'm sure that you guys had to go over into Preston County and help out some into that area, so it just broadens it out. Now, to get to your question, we're still continuing to focus on this. We lost three important bills we thought that would help, they did not make it across the finish line at the end. A lot of crazy things went on, but unfortunately, we didn't get those bills across that we thought would help. You're correct on billing, people don't understand, even throw PEIA in there.
Yes.
And one of the things that we looked at in PEIA, and that may come back up in special session, I'm sure they're going to call a couple of special sessions on some stuff that went on to clarify and finish it up, but we had looked at PEIA and what they will pay. They pay the least of anybody that's out there, and not only to them, but also to the hospitals. So it's going to be critical that we get that up some way, that that payment comes up better. If you look at Medicare and Medicaid, we don't have much control over Medicare at the federal level. We have reached out to them and told them that we have issues. If they raise their rate allowable, that will automatically raise Medicaid, because we're at 90% of whatever Medicare will give, we say we'll go up to that 90%, whether that'll be there. So I'll just tell you, when I came in here last fall, and I met with you, what, in November or December, I become keenly aware of how bad this situation was, I thought. I didn't even have an idea. When we went statewide, started looking at things, I'm telling you, this is a huge, huge issue for the state of West Virginia, and we have not, we, again, I'll repeat, we have not figured what we can do to really, one thing we're going to have to do, in my opinion, we've got to figure a way that we also, at a state level, can fund some of these services. The county levels are not going to be able to do it all. As he said, there's an unfunded mandate in there, we say to you, you must provide it, and that's where we stop at. So we're going to have to come up with some funding system that will help do that, and, but to answer your question, Mr. President, we did not accomplish that this session, but we are going to work hard on it through the interims, and just sitting here listening to this presentation, it may be the first presentation I want, because it's pretty much statewide when you're here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Delegate Statler.
Is there anything else you want to do at this time?
I would like to say just one more thing, and we've been having this conversation for a long time, but based off of just the working relationship between the commission and your board, you guys were talking to us about your trouble with salaries, and you were looking at, again, you've already got two hospitals that are paying 2.3 million, and to do anything, you've got to get them to pay more. And just because we were having the conversation, because in the spirit of there is help on the way, you guys went, took that level to $17 an hour, where you're only going to, you know, maybe be able to get it to 16. So I do appreciate you taking that step, and the commission will do our step, do our part in helping, you know, our end of the deal, where we said there's help on the way, and that be in the immediate, in the immediate year, in the immediate fiscal year, as we're going through budget process right now. So we will, we will take a look at that. So we, again, we want to be, we want to be a partner.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Yes, please.
Sure.
I wasn't going to speak, but I will briefly.
When have you not spoken?
Well, it's in my genes, I have to say something. I'll make it real quick. So a couple things, I want to go on what you just said a moment ago, if you'll go back the slides related to the reimbursement. Stop right there, go back to the last one. I can honestly say I feel very comfortable speaking for Albert Wright, Mike Grace. We are going to continue to be a partner and a funding partner in this. So I don't want the community to believe, if you go back to the last slide, I think it was, where it says continued health system contribution, that doesn't go away with a levy if it's approved, or working, I go, Mr. Sikora, it's exactly what you said, we're partners. That doesn't go away. The other thing, to go back to the economics, Commissioner Bloom, that you said a moment ago, and I hope people hear, and it's a problem we have with EMS, and I think Delegate Statler said it very well, not only do we have a problem with reimbursement, but you heard what Forrest said, if we help someone in the field, give them fluids, take care of them, and don't bring them to a facility, there's no reimbursement. That is a problem with the EMS system at large. When I worked with Highmark up in Pittsburgh, we were trialing to go out and partner with EMS, to give them reimbursement in the field for some of those encounters, because I'll speak from a hospital perspective, I don't want a patient coming to the hospital that doesn't medically need to be seen in an ER or come into a bed. That just brings our cost up. Our goal is, if you can be treated in the field, we can be treated in the field. And I go back to years ago, when my daughter fell, knocked her head, was unconscious, EMS showed up. They took care of her, she didn't have a concussion, she was fine. They didn't get billed, they couldn't bill for that service while I had an insurance card. That happens a lot, and you heard that, so that readiness cost is one thing, but it's also the work being done in the field to keep us healthy that there's no reimbursement for. So I hope we can partners with the Highmarks, the Health Plans, the Aetnas, and others to reimburse our wonderful EMS crews for doing medicine work in the field, but until that happens, that's all revenue, or lost revenue and opportunity to support these kind of operations that isn't being seen. So I thank you for your partnership, I really thank Forrest and the whole crew, and in particular, Jimmy. The coordination those two gentlemen have, Jan Care, Star City, that have mutual aid contracts with us, that also help. This is about Mont EMS, but it's about the EMS system as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move forward on grants. Do we have any EMS grants?
I have requests for reimbursements. The first one is for the SEEP grant, in the amount of $2,865. The next one is Governor's Highway Safety Program Impaired Driving, in the amount of And the final one is also the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Safe Communities, $515.23.
Move to approve the grant, move to approve the president signing the grant request as presented.
Second.
Copy, moving second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Correspondents, do we have any correspondence?
I just had a couple of things that came in on Monday after the agenda was posted, and actually, they're from Mr. Nichols. One is an article, DEP approves air quality permit for proposed data processing facility in Morgantown despite limited information of facility plans. And the other one is a Dominion Post article, letter to the editor, DEP should not have approved permit.
Okay, thank you. If there's anyone else.
I don't have any.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
No.
Okay. Moving to new business. Consideration to approve the Mon County Planning Commission Resolution P O 222 for text amendment double zero two 2021 to the West Run zoning ordinance by altering the conditional use of section 1100.04 and bulk requirement section 1100.05 of the R1 district in relation duplexes. Alter the conditional use of section 1150.04 and bulk requirements section 1150.5 of the R2 district in relation to duplexes. Alter the conditional use of section 1200.04 and bulk requirement section 1200.05 of the R3 district in relation to duplex and townhomes. And finally, alter the conditional use of section 1250.04 and bulk requirement section 1250.05 of the R4 district in relation to duplexes and townhouses.
I'm not sure I heard you. Could you repeat that?
I was practicing as I watched them in Charleston, when they get closer to 12 o'clock, how quickly they say things.
Move to approve the text amendment as presented.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration to approve a request by Casa for Kids in Mon and Preston Counties for use of the Cordova Square on April 28, 2022.
Move to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of requisition number 63 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for $634,069.17. And this is sales tax that is collected in the district that will be paid to the bonds.
Move to approve requisition number 63 as presented.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
And I did want to note that we dipped the previous month because we've been on a three month high, but we're still, the proceeds through nine months is still, we're going to be about 57% over last year's collections.
That's great. Consideration to approve a designated assignment on behalf of the County Commission, all legal pleadings in the pending opioid lawsuit as presented to the commission's legal counsel.
Move that the President be delegated with the authority to sign pleadings as counseled by commission legal representatives.
Second.
Any discussion or it's really self-explanatory?
Basically, yeah, those things come pretty quickly and they need, they need fast response.
Okay. Proper move in first, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval, a letter of support requested by Healthy Kids Incorporated for the West Virginia Sober Living Grant Application to the Appalachian Regional Commission's Inspire Initiative Program.
Move to approve the letter of support as presented.
Second.
Did you want to?
Can I ask that the administrator read the letter?
Yes.
Okay. The Montague County Commission is pleased to provide a letter of support and commitment towards West Virginia Sober Living's application to the Appalachian Regional Commission for the 2022 Inspire Initiative. As part of the WVSL's Food First Project, the MCC is partnering with WVSL and Healthy Kids, Inc. to provide the community food in an innovation center as a central kitchen hub for their project that will utilize the culinary arts, nutrition, sustainable agriculture skills, and vocation coaching to give participants in post-recovery the skills to find long-term employment within the local food ecosystem. In 2022, the Montague County Commission will begin a Phase Two project, which will include the addition of a state-of-the-art canning, preservation, and teaching expansion to the CFIC kitchen. Use of this space will allow participants to learn all aspects of food preservation, creating value-added products, and food entrepreneurship. This equipment in addition are valued at $200,000 and its use serves as income support for the Food First Project and its participants. The CFIC was conceived with the basic philosophy of the old Navajo proverb that states, give a man a fish and you feed him for a day, teach a man to fish and you feed him for a lifetime. The purpose of the CFIC is to help with establishing connections in our community by providing access to safe, locally grown foods that would prepare the community for future pandemics or public emergencies, help to eliminate food insecurity, reduce unemployment by increasing farmers' profitability and sustainability, development of programs that will help people suffering with substance use disorder, and ultimately improve the region's overall quality of life and job growth. In Appalachia, where substance use and opioid abuse are so prevalent, successful rehabilitation is closely tied to nutrition and self-reliance. The MCC wholeheartedly supports the West Virginia Sober Living's Food First Project, application to the ARC's 2022 Inspire Initiative, and the positive impact that it will have on the region's food system and job growth. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
This is exciting. This is the continued implementation of our vision for that whole, the whole facility out there with the kitchen, the Community Food Innovation Center. And I really appreciate Healthy Kids helping us with bringing that vision forward.
Yeah, we're all really excited with the Healthy Kids, the work they're doing out there. If you haven't had a chance to check them out, it's pretty remarkable, the way they're utilizing that kitchen and the programs they want to put in place to, like the letter states, teach people how to cultivate and prepare their own food and get healthy alternatives out there to the standard fare that's a lot of times served in child development centers and senior centers and wherever else. So this is a pretty exciting project.
Thank you. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To consider for approval, requisition number nine for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2021, a Phase Three Project Fund.
I move that we approve, there's a typo in the agenda, it is requisition one. Move that we approve requisition one as presented.
Second.
Proper move in second.
And Nadia, you want to indicate what's on there?
Yeah, the total requisition is for $385,438.57, $15,000 is going to be paid to the developer as reimbursement, and $370,438.57 will be paid to a third-party payee, which, there are several, Preston Contractors, the Thrasher Group, and Adrian Enterprises for project management.
Okay, proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And G, to consider for approval, the construction contract with Anderson Excavating in relation to RFP 2021 MCC dash CRPOO2 Chestnut Ridge Sletting Hill Slope Grading and Tow Rope Installation Project.
I note that the owner of Anderson Excavating has been out of town, but he's back in town and supposed to get us an agreement. So rather than have this delay a whole week, I would move that the President be, granted the, delegated the authority to sign the contract when received, as long as it's within the terms of their proposal.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other new business?
No.
Sean?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Reports from any elected officials or department supervisors?
Morning, morning. Mark Music Assessor. What I wanted to bring to your all's attention is, you may not be aware, but the state is upgrading their IAS system because of the new contract that was awarded three years ago to Tyler Technology for IAS World. So that training is beginning statewide. So to alert you all, which will have signs up, and also to alert the public, our training will begin March 31st. At this point in time, I am not shutting down our office, but what I want to make it aware to everyone is, we're going to be having staff that are in there online doing the training, which is a mandatory training. And we'll have a few that are serving the public. So if you come in and you see staff that have maybe headphones on or something like that, it's not that they're not paying attention to you or doing that, they're actually the ones taking the training at that time. So it's, it's a week-long training, and we decided to try to work a way of doing it without closing down the office for the entire week. So that's coming up. So March 31st is the kickoff to it. That's our first day of the orientation. Then April 4th through the 8th is where it'll start from 9:00 in the morning until about 5:00 on that. So some counties have already been in the process of it and starting, but that's our link to our time there is that. So I want to make you all aware of that. I'll give it over to Ben too, so he can have that information. We'll have it publicized on our sites there too.
I thought you had new staff in here earlier.
Well, yeah, I was hoping, I got the message that said someone's important up here, need to see you. So I'm thinking, only my grandson would be the only one that would have something like that. So I was hoping that he would hang out, but he wants to get to the playground. Or he may still be out in the hallway. I think I heard a little tremble out there, but yeah, I was hoping he'd stay in, but thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to make the commission aware of, and also invite you out next Saturday, March 26th at 8:30 a.m. at the West Virginia University Farms. The Montague County Office of Emergency Management, along with the State Office of Emergency Management through a state-funded grant, will be providing a bovine emergency response training course. And this course, we've reached out to the entire region, including our partners up in Green County, Pennsylvania, and Fayette County, Pennsylvania. We have over 50 people registered to take this bovine class. And what this class is, and we've worked with a lot of local representatives through the ag departments here. If we were to have a large-scale accident, a tractor-trailer accident that may be hauling cattle, what do you do in a case like that? Because when you have these accidents, you have not only deceased animals, you have injured animals, but you have those animals that are still, still in good shape that receive no injuries during it, but you may have this tractor-trailer that's tipped over. Part of this grant, we will be receiving here in Montague County, a set of the animal corral cages that we will be, that'll be housed here. And we have actually worked with Dana over at the Animal Control. Because what do you do with these potentially dead cattle? You know, if we get a deputy out on scene of one of these? And in this training, we'll teach everybody how to properly handle an incident of this magnitude, if we were to have it here in Mon County or anywhere within our region. So I wanted to make you aware of this, invite you out. The state ag commissioner is supposed to be on scene for part of it, but it's a really exciting class to be able to provide here in Montague County.
And it happens. This just happened in Florida on Sunday. Dozens of cattle were roaming I-5, and they had to shut down the whole thing to get them controlled, so.
And that is one of the things, you could potentially shut down the interstate for a whole day. Hopefully, by having the proper training and having the equipment here locally, we can get it mobilized and lessen the impact on the community that way.
Is the theory the same for horses or anything like that? Because I know that's, that's happened.
Yes, horses, pigs, cattle, all that type.
Thank you very much. Any other elected officials? See none?
Just potholes. We're all living with it. We hear the calls. We're in communication with DOH. They assure us they're working on them as best they can. I had a blowout last week, sat on the side of the road for two hours. My wife just texted me that, what's going on with these potholes? My car's making a rattling noise after I hit one. So we know, we wish we had the power and the ability to fix them ourselves. We do not. The county doesn't maintain roads. We can't fill potholes. We can offer assistance to DOH in any way, they'll accept it. But we know they're out there, and we know they're as bad as they've ever been, and we're doing everything we can to try to speed up the patching process. That's all I've got.
Well, thank you. We do have one power, and it's this right here, this microphone. So we listen, we report, and try to work with DOH to act as quickly as possible. Since last meeting, last Thursday, I had my partnership executive committee meeting, and our red team meeting, and a development authority meeting. On Friday, Commissioner Arnett and I attended the Herschel Mullins, and our administrator attended the Herschel Mullins plaque dedication that was held in the Justice Center. And again, I want to thank the widow of Herschel Mullins who was there and thanked her for her husband's service to the county. We did staff reports, and then in the afternoon, I had a broadband and general county project update call with Jessica Cross from Senator Capito's office, just to kind of give her an update on the projects that were in area. And what, there was a couple times Easter break, and in August, that the senator has a big bunch of time, and asked if we had anything that she'd like to come and talk about. And I said, well, you know, I told her what our biggest projects are, and for her to, anywhere that she can help, that would be great. Saturday, I attended the MHS Band Elimination Dinner. Unfortunately, it was very sparsely attended because of the snow, because of the snow, but it was fun. Sunday, I traveled to Dallas to participate in the P3 conference. P3 is what you think it is, public-private partnership, and it's actually a huge deal. Pretty much in a lot of parts of the country, and we're talking infrastructure deals that are 100 millions, billion dollars. I mean, those are the, you know, there's a lot of conversation. So I went there, you know, with the understanding that P3s kind of in Mon County have been a bad, leave a bad taste in people's mouths, but there really is a lot of good opportunity to work with between the government and the public. And we're going to be doing some of those things in regards to our broadband rollout. So more to come with that, but it was a really good conference. Monday, I was still at the conference, but I had a billing touchpoint call with our fleet management contractor. And yesterday is, we actually did our presentation at the conference, and it was very well received. So a lot of people that are kind of starting, even look, you know, so now I've got a national perspective as far as where people are, as far as trying to deploy broadband. And in our meeting, we asked people to raise, in our presentation, we asked people to raise their hand as far as if they were representing government or industries. So from the government standpoint, there was about 20 people there that were in the crowd, and we asked them, well, okay, so how many is deployed? It was about two. We asked them, how many thinking about it? They said about three. All the rest are before that. So, you know, as far as nationally, we are really far ahead of the curve as far as where we're at. That's really, I got back late last night, so, and prepare for budget hearings. We have budget hearings all day today, and in the afternoon, I have the MAP Executive Committee meeting. Tomorrow, I have Mountain Park Executive Committee meeting, and budget hearings as necessary, and then we have our MMPO meeting, where we'll certainly be talking about those potholes, Jeff. Friday, I have a broadband right-of-way and Eastman's discussion with our consultants, staff reports, and then we have additional budget discussions as needed. Next Monday, we got grant reviews. So we're really busy in budget time right now. I really want to thank, again, Forrest, thank you and your organization for coming, Kara, David's left, and profoundly thank David and Albert for their leadership in this whole endeavor. And Mr. Nichols, thank you for always keeping us apprised as far as what's going on in our community. We really do appreciate your dedication into looking and keeping us apprised, keeping the public apprised as far as things that are happening in Mon County. So thank you. And that's all I have.
Mine will be very short. I was fortunate enough, my wife and I were able to go to Philadelphia, and one of the surprises I did not realize is to go into restaurants, I not only had to be vaccinated, I had to show my vaccination card. So that is still very strong in the cities of Philadelphia. However, I do want to throw out an idea, and I am going to talk to the restaurant industry. Since they were having trouble finding people and keeping employees, they're doing something different. Several of the restaurants now charge a 2% fee on your bill, and that's used to keep the employees for health insurance. And I thought it was a neat idea and a concept, because now they're able to keep the people, by the people who are eating pay a 2%, and then that helps go into a health insurance program for those workers. And I thought it was just a neat idea, and I just wanted to throw it out as something, you know, to be progressive and considering. Besides that, that is it. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, we are adjourned. Thank you. No, that's too late, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, we're done.
Yes.
I know. If you want to come up and talk to us individually, you're more than welcome to, but the meeting is over, and we have other meetings to go on to. But I appreciate it, but we need to move forward. Thank you.